Well, we have a quorum. I welcome you to call this meeting to order. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss substitute bill number two for bill number 385, 2019 Regulations for Bicycleists. The committee, please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Clancy.
Present.
Councilmember Days. Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Present.
So Member Trakis.
Present.
Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The committee takes official notice of and admits into evidence all St. Louis County ordinances and resolutions. At this point, I will turn it over to Councilwoman Kelly Dunaway to provide some remarks.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks so much for being here today to talk about substitute bill number two for bill number 385, or as I like to call it, our bike bill. After a seven-month hiatus, it's really great to get this conversation going again. When I say "we" have been working on this piece of legislation for over a year since my constituent Carl reached out to me before I even took my oath of office. I am talking about the Missouri Bike Federation, Trailnet, avid cyclists and owners of bicycle shops, our Public Works and Transportation Departments when they were separate, and now that they're together, and my colleagues across county government and Carl. And looking back, it's been an incredible honor to work collaboratively with so many community leaders, volunteers, and St. Louis County Government to craft a piece of legislation that takes a really big step in the right direction toward making our roads safer for more people. I think we had all hoped to pass this bill in the spring, but COVID set us on a longer, windier path, and one that shed an even brighter light on why it's so critical that we make our roads safer for more users. In the past year, I've learned so much about bikes and other users on the road. I've learned even more about road safety and the dangerous inadequacies in our current infrastructure that make many of our roads unsafe for folks not in cars. I believe we can do better as a county and as a region to make it safer and easier for our people to get around for jobs, healthcare, and to spend time with friends and family. We must do better. This bike bill is just a start, in large part by giving more judgment to vulnerable users about what constitutes safety in any given moment, on any road, and in whatever circumstance may present itself. And though this is only a start, it's a good start in making our roads safer and more accessible for people in counties. And with that, Madam Chair, I will pass it back to you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dunaway. We have a few guests who have joined us this morning to provide some discussion points about this bill. First, we have Taylor March from Trailnet. Taylor, I will turn it over to you.
Thanks, Councilmember Clancy. So Trailnet is the region's nonprofit walking, biking, and advocacy group, and our mission is to lead in fostering healthy, active, and vibrant communities where walking, biking, and the use of public transit are a way of life. We represent over 2,000 members and supporters in the St. Louis region, and we work to make it safer and easier for people walking, biking, and using public transit in the region to get around. We've been doing this work for over 30 years and are pleased to provide comments on the updated updates to the county's traffic laws for people for bikes. I'm Trailnet's Policy Director. I've been with the organization for over five years and have been a full-time bicycle and transit commuter in the region for over 10 years. We feel St. Louis County is on the verge of prioritizing the safety of people on bikes and other vulnerable road users through these small changes to the county's traffic rules. The proposed legislation does a number of things to improve the current statutes. It prioritizes the safety and judgment of people using lanes, both for people on bikes as well as for people driving, allowing for people to make the necessary adjustments in their position to avoid hazardous road conditions or to pass motor vehicles. It creates a three-foot passing rule and more clearly spells out when people may change lanes and the expected behaviors as people are passing other users on our roadways. It clearly spells out when people on bikes are allowed to ride side-by-side, something we've heard often is an issue with the current statutes. It creates protections for users of the roads by prohibiting people driving in a careless or distracted manner. Falls a little bit short of a full distracted driving law, but that would need to come from the state level, something that Trailnet is working on in another front. And then it also extends the rules for bikes to apply to e-bikes. Our streets belong to everyone, and we feel everyone should be able to use them safely. We're confident that these policies are an important step towards safer streets. As Councilmember Dunaway mentioned, the original proposal amended to include input from Trailnet and other advocates, and we appreciate the opportunity to chime in early on in the process. We feel that in the future, legislation could go further by including similar language prioritizing the judgment for people on scooters, skateboards, and other wheeled mobility devices, as well as updates to the e-bike rules to better coincide with kind of some of the national standards that are still emerging. Likewise, laws are no replacement for road design changes and infrastructure improvements, which should be the primary focus for reducing injuries and fatalities to all users on the county's roadways. Trailnet supports County Bill 385 as a necessary and timely step to improve the county's traffic code. I'm happy to expand on any of the key points I mentioned and answer any questions that people may have.
Before, thank you, Taylor, for that. Before we engage in Q and A, I would like to go through all the panelists, and then I'll open it up to the council members for any questions that they have. Next, we have Tom Blair from the Missouri Department of Transportation. Tom, if you would like to unmute yourself and provide some remarks. Is Tom here? I am not seeing Tom. All right. We will next go to Joe Calessa from St. Louis County. Joe, are you here?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for having me today. I'm the current Acting Deputy Director for Transportation and Public Works, as well as a Division Manager for Project Development, which handles planning and engineering. With me is Larry Welty, who's our Project Manager for the Action Plan for Walking and Biking, and himself an avid cyclist. I did have one question about the e-bike portion. That was the only, the biggest, my biggest concern when I read the bill is the definitions for bicycles seem to exclude e-bikes. The definition for bicycle was solely human-powered, and then the motorized only talked about gas engines. So that, that was one point that I did want to bring up in our discussion today.
Councilwoman Clancy, Chairwoman Clancy, do you want me to touch on that now, or do you want to wait until the end while we get into discussion?
Well, did Joe and Larry have any further remarks or anything?
I know Larry has one other issue to discuss, so I'll let him take it.
Okay, well, I'll, before that, yes, Councilwoman Dunaway, if you would like to address that point, go right ahead.
So the issue of electric bikes came up a lot in our deliberations, and we ultimately decided that we needed to exclude them specifically. And I may be misremembering this, so Taylor, if you can help to, feel free to jump in. I think the reason that we held off is because this is an emerging area of the law, and there isn't a lot out there that we could rely on in terms of what's working in other communities. And so we deliberately left this out as that law becomes a little bit more, just so we better understand what it looks like and what is working. And I remember a lot of discussion about this. It was several months ago, so I don't remember the specifics of it, but I feel like that is where we left it. Taylor, do you have any, any memory or anything to add?
Yeah. So it did extend some of the governance from people on bikes to people on e-bikes as well. However, as you said, it does kind of use this somewhat imperfect approach of using engine cylinder size and horsepower as the criteria for that. That is something that we've seen as an approach in other states. It doesn't necessarily rule out, you know, full e-bikes, since those can be equated with the kind of horsepower size. But we are seeing an emerging standard kind of as a three-class e-bike system that's being used in now 22 other states. And so that creates kind of a hierarchy of e-bikes using kind of a Class 1, a Class 2, and a Class 3. And I'm happy to kind of go into what each one of those classes are, but roughly, it has to do with a level of assistance and the maximum speed that can be achieved by that device on the road.
And that was going to be the recommendation of the Department of Transportation and Public Works, as well as that class system?
Yeah, I think that that would be a wise, a wise approach, that is, does seem to be kind of the national standard that is emerging at this time.
And I understand that that was based on the Society of Automotive Engineers' recommendations and classification.
So do we, is this something that you all believe that we should work on another substitute bill to add these classifications in and be specific about, I mean, adding these into the definitions and then making sure they're included in the legislation?
Yes. As the definitions are written, e-bikes are excluded from the protections of the bill. And that, that leaves me with concerns as it's a fairly large, growing segment of the ridership. I definitely prefer to see some protection extended, even if it's imperfect, rather than exclusively really written out of the bill as it currently stands.
Okay, great. We will see what we can come up with then. Thank you so much.
You're quite welcome.
Larry, did you have further discussion points for the council on this bill?
Yeah, I mean, overall, I think it's fine. The one issue that I had was with the riding to, and I'm looking for that wording at the moment, but where it allows to ride to abreast, let me see, when the rightmost through lane of traffic is too narrow to be safely shared between a single bicyclist and an overtaking vehicle, persons riding bicycle may ride abreast within that traffic lane. That just seemed counterintuitive to me. If it's already too narrow for a vehicle on a bicyclist, why put another bicyclist in that lane? State law doesn't really address that point. It only has the first point that can ride abreast when not impeding other traffic. But I just saw that as something being a little counterintuitive.
Thank you. Taylor, or sorry, do you have any, does anybody have any reaction to that?
I would say, yeah, there are other states that allow for folks to ride to abreast if the lane is too narrow to share with a motor vehicle. I know Kentucky is one of those that does that kind of on a statewide level. However, that is counter to what most people on bikes do in terms of, you know, if the lane is really shallow, really narrow and, you know, not able to be shared, most people don't behave that way. So, yeah, it's, it's more to protect the cyclist than it is to kind of really endorse that kind of behavior.
So at this point, I would like to turn it over to other council members to see if they have any questions for any of our panelists.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman Trakis, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming today. Let me start with this. I would bet that Mr. March and Mr. Welty included, nobody on this conversation right now has spent more time and logged more miles on a bicycle than me. I spent two decades as a competitive cyclist and triathlete. I've raced bicycles literally all over the world. So I'm sympathetic to what's trying to be done here. That said, I have serious concerns with the legislation as written. So please understand my motivations with respect to my questioning. So let me start with the Public Works folks. And either of you can chime in, Mr. Welty or Mr. Calessa. Am I correct that this bill when passed would apply only to unincorporated St. Louis County and so-called arterial roads? Would you agree with that?
Yes, sir. The ordinance would only apply to roads under county jurisdiction, which would be our unincorporated as well as our arterial roads that have, that run through municipalities. So there would be, and then that is a sick concern I share with you, that the law changes as cyclists pass boundaries.
Correct. And so we're clear on it. Arterial roads is just a convenient way of, in my opinion anyway, making it harder to comprehend the reality, what we're talking about is major state highways. For instance, Highway 30, which is Graboy Road, Highway 21, which is LeMay, I'm sorry, Teson Ferry Road, Highway 6167, which is LeMay Ferry Road. These are not simple one- or two-lane roads. These are major thoroughfares. Would you agree with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So the roads you mentioned are actually MODOTs, but the county arterial roads share those similar characteristics. Hanley Road, Big Bend, Clayton, et cetera.
Right. But am I correct also that the county's designation of arterial roads would include the roads that I've just mentioned, even though they're state highways? You share them, and you agree to maintain those roads, or not maintain them, but in terms of regulating the traffic on those roads by designating them as arterial roads? Is that correct?
No, sir. The roads that are owned by MODOT are under state jurisdiction. County arterials are the major roads which are under county jurisdiction. They're roads of similar character, however, they're under different jurisdiction.
So let me ask the county councillor then to elaborate on my point, because my understanding is pretty clear on this, that once the county designates a road as arterial, even if it is in fact a state road, the county then has the ability to regulate traffic on that road. Is that correct, Madam Councillor?
I think that the question you're asking is, are there sections of arterial road that are actually state highways? Is that?
Yes.
Is that the question? And I am, I'm actually not sure about that, but I do know that, to the extent that any of the roads that, that are, any of the state highways that would be covered by our traffic code, that the State Transportation, Highway and Transportation Commission would have to concur with any traffic control devices.
I was going to get to that in a minute, but just so to be clear on this, I'm speaking about, I believe, St. Louis County Ordinance 137.588, which deals with county urban road systems, as well as 1105.040, deals with the arterial road system. And you can perhaps, you know, give us a memorandum after the hearing today. But my point here is simply that, as you pointed out, in addition to the sections I've cited, state MODOT and State Highway Commission would have to, for lack of a better word, concur with any regulation we chose to try to implement on a state road that is also an arterial road. Would that be a fair characterization?
Yes, to the extent that there are any St. Louis County arterial roads, any roads designated to St. Louis County arterial roads that are also state highways, yes, there would have to be concurrence for any traffic control devices.
Okay. And so unless someone, either of you gentlemen can let me know, to your knowledge, has MODOT or the State Road and Highways Commission made any such concurrence with respect to the proposed legislation?
I am unaware of any coordination which has been done on this bill between the county and the state. I'm sorry, sir.
That's fine. That's why I asked the question. Let's see. I could, Mr. March, if you're still here with us?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Okay. Fair to say that you're an avid cyclist?
Yeah, that's a fair assessment. I use a bike to get around, yeah.
And I, trust me, I've been there. I know the passion well. My only point here is, so would it say, as an avid cyclist, you probably spend numerous hours a week on a bicycle?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and where I'm going with this is, it's got to be a little hard for you to be objective with respect to your input on this bill. Would that be a fair characterization?
I don't know that that would be a fair characterization. My work is in walking, biking, and public transit advocacy. I'm primarily a transit writer, and while I know kind of the national standards, I would say my primary objective is the safety of road users, for all road users.
And I respect that. I just am trying to get a sense of objectivity in, for instance, I think it was, it may not have been you, so if I'm not attributing, if I'm attributing the wrong statement to you, please forgive me, but I thought it was you that said that, you know, the idea is to make roads safer for those not in cars. And I guess my point here is, aren't roads designed for cars?
It was me that said that, Councilman Trakis. And, and you know what? I don't think so. I think roads are for, I see horse and buggies on the roads. I see motorcycles on the roads. I see tractors and trailers on the roads. I see people on the roads, and I think the roads are here so that people can get around.
So I'm going to get back to Mr. Tyler. I'm sorry.
I would point you back to the St. Louis County Complete Streets Ordinance that was adopted, that specifies that, you know, the county's roadway system is for the purpose of mobility for all modes of transport.
Okay. And all of the vehicles that Councilwoman Dunaway mentioned are all subject to state inspection and licensing, correct? Motorcycles, automobiles, I don't know about horses and buggies, I don't see them that often, but certainly motorcycles and automobiles, yes?
Those two, but we also talked about tractors and other things that probably don't have licenses to be on the roads.
Well, let's talk about tractors, automobiles, and motorcycles. They all require legally to have insurance. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. And then, a moment, please, I'm almost finished. I'd like to get back to, and thank you, Mr. March, I appreciate your candor. Mr. Calessa, I think you had mentioned that your concern about the definition of bicycles, motorized bikes specifically, yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I don't disagree with you. In fact, as Councilwoman Dunaway knows, that's one of the things I mentioned to her months ago when we were working together on this bill, that the definition of motorized bicycle probably needs to be a little bit more expansive. So I agree with you there. And then, Mr. March educated us on these different classes of e-bikes. So, and I took your comment to mean that, at least as written now, the bill is deficient because it doesn't sufficiently define e-bike and motorized bike. Do you agree with that?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then lastly, I think, Mr. Welty, I agree with you with respect to this concern about bicyclists riding abreast when the road is too narrow. So my question is to you, is that another area where this bill probably needs some refinement in terms of what riding abreast constitutes and where it should be permitted?
I would say yes to that.
Okay. And then lastly, well, I think I'll save that one for later on if I need, all for your candor, and again, for coming here today and helping us, helping us understand the issues contained in this legislation. That's all I have for my chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Trakis. Anyone else? Councilman Fitch, go ahead.
I'd like to take you on a bike ride through my council district on Route 141, starting in the, at the Jefferson County line in the Fenton area. Now, keep in mind, if this ordinance passes, my only concern is it only applies to the unincorporated areas. Now, Route 141 is not a county-maintained arterial road, it's a state road. However, there are bits and pieces of 141 that go through the unincorporated area. So here's the bike ride I'm going to take you through. You start off in the city of Fenton, doesn't apply there. Then you go into unincorporated St. Louis County, it does apply there. Then you go into Valley Park, it doesn't. Twin Oaks, it doesn't. Manchester, it doesn't. Then you go into unincorporated St. Louis County, it does. Then you go into Town and Country, it doesn't. Then you go back into unincorporated St. Louis County, it does apply. Then you go into Chesterfield, it doesn't. Then you go into Maryland Heights, it doesn't. Then you go back into unincorporated in the Earth City area, it does apply. Can you see how this ordinance can be very confusing to those that have to abide by it, whether you're on a bicycle or whether you're in a vehicle? That's my main concern with this ordinance. It only applies in the unincorporated areas and on county arterial roads, such as like Big Bend. Big Bend is a county-maintained arterial road, even though it goes through municipalities. So that is my concern with it, and how will we address that concern? Whoever wants to respond.
I'll take it, if that's all right, Councilman Fitch?
Yes.
And sorry, Taylor, I'm going to put you, put you and the Missouri Bike Federation on blast a little bit here, too, but one of our goals is to reach out to the municipalities and ask them to update their laws accordingly. In terms of the state-maintained roads or any state roads that would affect this, in fact, we're behind the state in our legislation in many ways. And I haven't, to be honest with you, Councilwoman Fitch, I have not looked at the bike laws in the municipalities, so I don't know if we're catching up to them or if we're going to be asking them to catch up to us. But it is something that we are all planning on doing to address that exact issue. It's completely, it's unreasonable, unsafe to be going in and out of laws just on a, the bike ride just took us on.
I agree. That's, that's my main concern. I have no problem with bicycles sharing the road with vehicles. I have no problem with making it safer for them to do that. My concern is this meandering in and out of the unincorporated areas and how we address that. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I may, I would like to add, I hear you, and I completely agree, and I wish that as a region, we collaborated better on things like this, and hopefully, we can get to a point where we do. But to me, that's not a reason not to move forward with the legislation. If anything, it's a reason to move forward and make a policy stand on behalf of St. Louis County that we are saying to St. Louis County and to our constituents that we want to make our roads safer for more users, and hopefully, everyone else will agree.
If if I may, also, I think, um, Councilman Fitch, the the issue that you highlighted is not unique to this particular ordinance and applies to any any components of the county's traffic code, um, as it goes through the very municipalities in St. Louis County. And it's one of the the difficulties in working in this space. Um, that being said, uh, the current bill before you doesn't go any further really than any of the municipalities, um, in terms of the it it doesn't drastically alter the way that, um, people are expected to interact as they pass through these jurisdictions.
And if I could add, I will disagree with you a little bit because I enforced state law on these roads for 30 plus years. So what I will tell you is, is if you're in the in a municipality, even if you're on 141 in the city of Town and Country, state law still applies there. However, as an ordinance, as an ordinance, it only applies the unincorporated areas and on the arterial road system maintained by St. Louis County. That's the big difference between, um, normal traffic laws and an ordinance that's very specifically tailored to something like this bicycle ordinance is.
Um, I have a couple of questions, um, and whoever wants to take them can. Um, I would just want to make sure I understand this correctly. So this policy is is about unincorporated roadways in unincorporated areas and county owned and maintained roadways, even in incorporated areas. So therefore, when I think of my district, District Five, I believe Big Bend is county. Is that correct? So how? Okay, so if we, let's say we move forward with this and we have this policy, how do we, um, help the public understand what the rules are and how quickly they change to Councilman Fitch's point about the meandering? Does anyone know the answer to that? Or have an answer for that?
I would say, and as with any changes to any kind of traffic code, there will probably need to be an education campaign that goes along this to make sure that people understand the changes to the ordinance. Um, again, that being said, you know, the the primary, you know, the when people are allowed to move from the right of the road, um, which is kind of the primary change that this ordinance spells out is, uh, when kind of defining some key exemptions for when it's not practicable, um, for someone who is on a bicycle to be riding on the kind of the gutter of the road, um, you know, to avoid drainage grates, other hazardous conditions, that all is also in state law as well, the same provisions, um, and is in every municipality's, uh, ordinance that I'm aware of.
Um, and then my my other question is, who enforces this? And again, anyone who has an answer for that can answer.
I think it depends on the roadway. Um, that I think it it would be whoever is in responsible for enforcement on that particular road. So if it's if there's a municipality, say Midland Boulevard in University City, that would be the University City Police Department. Um, as we're talking about roads further out into the county's roadway system, um, that may be, uh, the county police department.
Got it. Thank you. I have no further, um, questions or comments. Um, anyone else? Before we turn it over for public comment, I do think we have a few.
I have questions.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman Gray.
I know, um, well, has anyone heard, um, heard from or reached out to any of the municipalities to find out, um, if they have any concerns or if they support this issue? I haven't heard from my, um, and only have a few, uh, any of my mayors. And so I'm just wondering, it's it's kind of hard to make the decision. They don't, um, reach out to you if they do have concerns. So has anyone heard from, is their mayor, is, uh, voiced any concern? Or support?
Because this wouldn't apply to municipalities, I'm not sure. Uh, I haven't heard from any. Um, but I'm not sure why they would reach out since this really is for St. Louis, um, unincorporated St. Louis County. Um, but Taylor, um, you mentioned before that this doesn't go any further than any of the municipalities in St. Louis County. So do you can you give us an overview of where this would stand in comparison to the municipalities?
Yes, that's why I asked that question based on his, I mean.
Um, that's, I'll do my best, um, being, you know, being St. Louis County and having the the multitude of jurisdictions that are there. Um, of the ones that I'm familiar with, most have provisions, um, related to when it's appropriate for someone who's on a bike, um, to to not kind of be as far to the right as is practicable as is defined in in state law and other times. Um, so again, avoiding hazardous road conditions, um, passing standing motor vehicles who pulled over to the side of the road to to, you know, pick up passengers or, um, you know, postal workers who are dropping off mail. Um, those kinds of provisions are in most of the municipalities ordinances that I'm aware of. Um, the other, the other situations, um, you know, that get changed in this, uh, the careless and distracted, um, driving provision, uh, I know is is something that, um, the city of Kirkwood has in their provisions. Again, is something that is is somewhat unenforceable at this point, since the state does preempt, um, distracted driving legislation, uh, at the state level. Um, but it is up to, um, it is up to local municipalities and jurisdictions to kind of set their own traffic codes, um, in every area outside of that distracted driving provision.
I would just like to clarify that state law doesn't say practicable. It says safe. So it does make allowances for bicyclists to move to the left, uh, when they feel that it's for their safety.
And that's that's something that this this law does, or this bill, um, currently does change is change it from practicable in St. Louis County to safe to better co- coincide with state law. So currently, it changes if you were riding in, um, in Jefferson County and then and transferred into, uh, St. Louis County on the nonincorporated roadway. Um, the the differences, um, are actually more drastic at this point. Um, and I I believe that the initial conversations surrounding this law, um, started because there was an individual who was who was actually cited for not writing as far to the right as is practicable, um, when they felt the condition was unsafe. Um, and so that was kind of what sparked some of the conversation is because, you know, they weren't familiar with this provision to some of the the comments before, um, and and wanted to kind of have it better co- coincide with, um, with other municipalities and other areas in the state.
And and I will add, just, um, because the issue of unincorporated St. Louis County has come up, the constituent of mine that that got this conversation going over a year ago does live in my district in unincorporated St. Louis County.
Councilman Gray, did you have any further questions?
Um, no, I think a side by side, not not necessarily today. I'm just saying, a side by side comparison will help some people, especially if the bill passes, so that they can see how closely related the the ordinance may be to state law.
Um, at this point, I will turn it over for public comments. Madam Clerk? Oh, go ahead, Councilman Trakus.
Thank you. I do have some follow up questions based on the, uh,
Sure.
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. March, I'll start with you. Do you have a copy of the proposed legislation in front of you?
I do.
Sorry.
You do? Yes, is that a yes?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great. I'd like you to, um, draw your attention to Section Three, Subsection A, if you don't mind. You let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, so you've read it. And that's the section, one of the sections, anyway, you're talking about where they changed, um, the language from practicable to, uh, um, safe. That be correct?
Correct.
Okay. And my question to you is, it's safe as determined by the bicyclist, correct?
Correct.
Okay, now, um, would you have a problem with language that either replaced or was in addition to that so that if subsequent investigation post accident, law enforcement determined that, um, the bicyclist was operating in an unsafe manner? Do you have a problem with that?
I I think that would be a difficult thing to define in terms of what is safe. Um, and you might have to have specific exemptions, you know, in terms of to make that a concrete standard, you might need to incorporate things such as the Paser road rating, the prevalent prevalence of grates, um, whether the curb was a rolled curb or a hard edge curb. So I think that's where, short of providing all that kind of language within the legislation itself, um, we have to provide some some accountability for people's judgment, um, and and trust them to make the right decisions.
And and so, based on that statement, you believe that the ordinance should simply defer the bicyclist alone with respect to what is safe and what is unsafe? Is that what you're saying?
That is correct. I mean, we do that with every other road user, uh, on the road when it comes to, you know, a yield provision, um, for someone who is driving a car, you know, they're allowed to proceed through the intersection whenever there's no oncoming traffic and they deem that it's safe. So
I understand.
I don't think that's outside of, um, you know, the the general provisions that we have for traffic code, um, within the county.
We also have within the county requirements up for subsequent investigation by law enforcement in the occasion of an accident. And they make determinations with respect to who was operating safely, who was operating negligently, et cetera. Would you agree with that?
I would agree.
Okay, so why shouldn't bicyc- bicyc- bicyclists be held to the same standard?
If I if I am understanding your line of thought correctly, um, I don't believe that anything in the legislation as it sits currently would preempt law enforcement from still making those judgments, uh, in the event of a crash investigation.
Okay, so is there a problem then with including that specific type of reference in the bill so that it would read, for instance, as determined, say, or judged safe by this bicyclist unless subsequent investigation by law enforcement determined in the case of an accident determines that the bicyclist oper- was operating the bicycle negligently? Have a problem with that?
I would be interested to hear if there are other examples within the county traffic code where that is the case. Um, I'm not, I think that, again, to make this clear and understandable for the general public, as far as how this applies to them as they're operating on the county's roadways, that to me would seem somewhat convoluted and and difficult to judge.
But you do agree that the 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 bill as drafted simply essentially states that, um, whether or not it's safe for the cyclist to, uh, operate within the right lane is solely within the cyclist's determination?
Correct.
There's no provision for any subsequent, um, determination by, um, law enforcement or otherwise with respect to whether or not the cyclist was, um, operating safely or did have the, uh, the need or, uh, um, requirement to to operate or more into on the left side of the road.
Again, that that's the only time that I would be familiar with that kind of determination being needed would be the in the event of a subsequent crash. And I don't believe that current anything in the current ordinance would preempt, uh, law enforcement from making such a judgment.
And okay, thank you. Just hang on one second. Mr. Welty and Mr. Kalesa, do you have any, uh, additional thoughts on this particular aspect with respect to, uh, determinations of safety exclusively for the bicyclist in the legislation?
I have nothing specific to add. Um, as I agree that there's nothing that would preclude, uh, law enforcement from making a determination, uh, after the fact that there was negligence involved on the part of the bicycle rider, um, I I don't see harm in your proposal.
Thank you. Um, and then, uh,
Council Councilman, um, Trakus, could it, would it be possible to get Councilman Fitch to weigh in on this? Um, I'm just curious because I'm not, I mean, I I don't, I haven't written ordinance in St. Louis County, but anytime there's an accident and safety and negligence is an issue, does it have to be spelled out in an ordinance for the police to do their due diligence?
My only concern here is that, as spelled out in the proposed legislation, it states, and I quote, "The bicyclist shall ride far enough to the right within the traffic lane as judged safe by the bicyclist." Well, um, it it's it's vague at best, in my opinion, uh, with respect to a subsequent, um, issue as to who was operating safely and who wasn't. It it defers almost to the bicyclist as opposed to, uh, um, experts who make a pine after the fact. It kind of gives a bicyclist, I think, a little more weighted opinion than perhaps, uh, other people involved in in the analysis. So that was my concern. I'm happy to have, uh, Councilman Fitch weigh in.
Yeah, I I in I I'd also like to add that I personally feel like there is no one who should have greater judgment than the person who has to dodge, you know, uneven road edges and potholes, um, in a way that could really cause damage to their life and limb. Um, I'll just put that out there, but I I would love to have Councilman Fitch weigh in on this if if he's still here and doesn't mind.
Yeah, Councilman Fitch, if you have a response to that, please.
I'd be happy to. Generally speaking, um, in enforcement of of traffic laws, especially if there's an accident, uh, there has to be an independent witness that said they saw what happened. Generally speaking, the officer, uh, would not issue a traffic ticket for something unless someone else saw the violation that was uninvolved in the accident. That's usually how that goes. And I can tell you, my 30 plus years in law enforcement, I am not familiar with anyone ever citing a bicyclist for an ordinance violation as far as traffic code goes. So that would be extremely rare. Uh, and maybe we can even have the, uh, the TrailNet folks weigh in. I I'd love to hear if they've ever heard of a bicyclist, for example, getting stopped by the police and issued a ticket, uh, for some traffic infraction on the highways. I would bet that would be very, very rare.
So I bef- I'm sorry, I know you wanted to hear from Mr. March, but this whole thing happened because my constituent got pulled over by a St. Louis County police officer because he was outside of that three feet allowable edge of the road, um, that that the law dictates. You you can only be within three feet of the edge of the road. And my constituent was further than three feet because the edge of the road was uneven and rocky and uns- unsafe. Um, and the police officer pulled him over and said, "You can't ride that. You can't ride so close to the center of the road." And my constituent said, "But the look at the edge of the road." And the officer said, "Okay." And then officer got in his car, gave him a warning. And then my constituent got back on his bike and continued to ride beyond three feet. And then the police officer pulled him back over and wrote him a ticket.
Okay, and I I would love to hear, there's got to be more to that. It just I've I just have never seen that. I personally have never written a bicyclist's ticket. Uh, and I just, and and I supervised those officers for a long time. There must have been a very unusual situation there. If 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 county police officers are issuing five tickets a year to bicycles, I'd be shocked in the entire county. So that would be a rare occasion. That's probably why you heard from them. It's very, very rare.
But to the question that Councilman Trakus is presenting, would there be, do we need to put specific, um, language in the legislation to allow a safety investigation to happen? Or would it just naturally occur if there's an accident?
It would naturally occur if there was an accident.
Thank you.
So I think at this point, um, let's hear what some members of the public have to say about this. So I will turn it over to, um, our clerk to read the public comments. I think we our clerk to read the public comments. I think we
With all due respect, I still have a couple of follow-up questions.
I'm sorry, Councilman Trakus, I wasn't sure if you did or not.
Thank you. Um, and this is directed to Mr. Welty and Mr. Klessa at Public Works. Um, gentlemen, as you understand the legislation, would it require, um, any type of specific markings um, for lanes or otherwise, um, on county roads?
No, sir. Lane marking for, um, all facilities are covered by the MUTCD Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, and that is still the same criteria we would follow, um, after this bill is passed.
Okay, so this bill would not result in any, uh, marking of specific bicycle lanes on any county roads. Is that correct?
Not specific to this bill, no, sir. All, all such markings are in regards to our, uh, program.
Okay, and, um, you're familiar with what, what a road diet is?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, could you let me know, at least based on your opinion, and, um, Mr. Welty, please feel free to weigh in. Um, would the result of this bill be effectively the creation of ro- of a road diet or road diets on, on roads because of, uh, essentially allowing bicyclists to occupy more of the right-hand lane of the road?
Not a road diet as such, no, sir.
Okay, and help, help us understand the distinction between, um, road diet, which I, I'll grant you would envision specific lanes. I get that. Effectively providing those lanes without marking them by allowing, uh, greater use of the right-hand lane by bicyclists pursuant to this, uh, proposed ordinance.
So, um, and Larry, correct me if I'm wrong, um, but I believe generally the cyclists can already use, um, the full lane if they need to. I know that that is a regular tenet in cyclist training. Uh, so I, I do not see where this bill will have a significant impact on, on roadway utilization by cyclists.
I don't see where this will impact roadway design.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, and, um, uh, back to Mr. March, um, you mentioned an education campaign. Um, just to, could you elaborate for that, uh, uh, on that for us in terms of what you mean by an education campaign?
Uh, that was specifically related to, so TrailNet being a nonprofit advocacy organization that's, that's been in the region for, for thirty years. Um, we do education as far as what the rights responsibilities of all roadway users are currently, um, and would, you know, anytime there's a change, um, you know, we work to incorporate that into communications around that change specifically.
And when you say communications, that means from your network to whoever follows you?
Correct, yeah, from our, our network to our two thousand members and subscribers.
So how does that, um, education campaign get beyond your two thousand members to the, uh, driving public in St. Louis County? With any reliability?
The driving public in St. Louis County, um, generally is going to be a part of the, uh, you know, normal driver's guide updates. And again, everything that we're talking about in regards to this bill um, already has prevalence within the, the state driver's guide. Um, none, none of this goes above and beyond. There's already provisions for uh, people who are riding bikes, you know, again, as, as Mr. Welty pointed out, um, you know, judging the, the safe distance from the right side of the roadway as well as the safe passing provisions, um, that we see, uh, on the state level as well.
So did I understand you correctly that at least as far as you're concerned, the state driver's guide, um, essentially provides for all of the, uh, um, provisions of this legislation already?
Correct.
So then what's the point of the legislation?
The point of the legislation is to, to counteract, uh, you know, the, the fact that we had a constituent in St. Louis County, um, who was pulled over and cited for not following this far-to-the-right provision, um, in a way that is not in accordance with other municipalities and the state as a whole.
So because of one off incident, as Councilman Fitch has stated, um, may well have been the only time a bicyclist was cited all of last year or whenever it took place. We're going to, to essentially rewrite the, uh, or at least add legislation in an ordinance affecting all of unincorporated St. Louis County exclusively for the most part. Um, so that that won't happen again, that one incident of writing a citation? I, I, that seems a little extreme to me, frankly, that we are, uh, um, taking on way more than is necessary. But, um, that's not a question, that's just a statement.
Um, but Councilman Trakus, um, what if we have county ordinances that are not up to the modernization levels of the state law? Um, are you suggesting that we should maintain archaic and out-of-date laws just because it takes a, a few extra lines of ink to update and be more in line with what's happening outside of our region?
No, I fundamentally disagree with your characterization. So that, it's not about, uh, the ordinances being archaic. No one's, uh, convinced me today that there's nothing in cu- current law. Mr., uh, uh, March just conceded that the state driver's guide already provides for everything that's in this bill. So, um,
It does for state roadways, but as, as I mentioned, you know, you had a, a constituent within St. Louis County that was cited for a road, roadway violation that only exists on unincorporated St. Louis County roads, uh, as it currently sits and nowhere else in the state.
Um, pardon me, I do have to interject. I have a hard stop at eleven, as Councilwoman Dunaway knows.
That's fine, please.
I, well, and I, um, I was gonna turn it over to Vice Chairwoman Gray to continue chairing the meeting, but it looks like she stepped away. So I will turn it over to Councilwoman Dunaway. Are you here, Council Chairwoman, Vice Chairwoman Gray?
Yes, but I was gonna let Kelly chair.
Okay, okay. Well, I'll turn it over to, uh, Councilwoman Dunaway to chair the meeting to the end. Thank you, everyone, for the good discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, if the Department of Planning could be recognized?
Yes, absolutely, please.
Um, we were invited to be on this panel, and I just wanted to take a moment before we move to a public comment to demonstrate our support for this bill. Um, we would note that the roads are not just simply for cars. There's maybe sixty feet of right-of-way, and everyone who pays taxes to the county is entitled to use that right-of-way, whether they're in a car, on foot, walking their dog, using a stroller, um, they're entitled to feel safe on that roadway. And I would note that part of this legislation calls out vulnerable road users. We need to recognize that even if you have the ability to make a judgment that you feel safe on a bicycle, maybe the people who are in the large metal boxes should not be the ones to make the judgment of what the cyclist might feel is safe. Um, and I would point out that this bill would give a little more protection to all vulnerable road users.
Thank you so much. Would you mind stating your name for the record?
Melissa Wilson. I'm a planner with the Department of Planning.
Thank you so much. Does anyone, um, have any questions for Melissa? Are there any other questions?
I'll give you, Madam Chair, I have some questions for her.
Please, go ahead.
Uh, Ms. Wilson, big, big metal boxes, what do you mean by that?
The, when we are on the roadway, and like you, I've been a cyclist, um, the big metal boxes are the cars. They're the same people that we are, walking on the sidewalk, riding our bicycles, but they have essentially a shield around them that changes their perception of the road conditions at times. You know, the constituent who brought up this legislation, they notice the potholes and they notice the grates and the trash and the leaves and the gutter, but when you're driving in a car, you just aren't experiencing it the same way. And I was just trying to make that distinction.
So is there some reason you can't refer to them as automobiles or cars?
I was just trying to make the distinction in the experience.
So it seems that you have a bias against automobiles or cars?
That would not be the case.
I'm sure.
It's the motorists in the cars who I think need to be aware of how other road users might feel.
You're intensely, uh, pro bicycle and pro, um, access for bicyclists on public roadways. Would that be fa- a fair characterization?
I think that all road users, regardless of the mode, have the, the need to feel safe as they move about their communities.
And you were involved a couple of years ago with the proposal of the imposition of road diets in St. Louis County, were you not?
The Department of Planning was, but I was not yet in the Department of Planning.
Are you a proponent for road diets?
I think that we need to look at the right-of-way width and see if it's proportioned correctly to who uses it and who it can benefit most. When they're going to school, when they're going to work, to the grocery store, it doesn't need to be one way to travel, um, to get to our different land uses.
Thank you, but I believe my question was, are you a proponent of road diets?
Um, I would not say that because I think that's an outdated term. Um, I'm a proponent of right sizing, which is like I was saying, looking at the right-of-way we have, which all taxpayers pay towards, and proportioning in, proportioning it correctly.
Then before you came to the Department of Public War, I'm sorry, Department of Planning, um, were you cognizant of the, uh, department's effort to impose road diets on the, uh?
I was not because I was still in graduate school.
So you were completely unaware of that initiative?
I am aware of it now, and I believe it was a collaborative effort with the Missouri Department of Transportation as well.
And it was the Department of Planning's position then that they were in favor of road diets? Is that a fair characterization?
It was the department's professional opinion that changing the paint on the roadway, uh, permanently or temporarily could benefit the businesses and the residents along that area of Graveway and in that area of Afton, um, in several ways.
So my question was, was it the Planning Department's position at that time that they were a proponent or in favor of road diets?
I'd have to go back to see any sort of documentation because I wasn't there, but in the manner you've characterized it, I suppose.
Thank you, uh, here, all I have.
Are there any other questions or comments from council members? Okay, so before we move to the public comment, I did get a, uh, seventeen-page document from the Missouri Bike Federation, uh, who couldn't be here today. We have worked very closely with them over the last year, um, to get to the language that is in the bill as it currently stands. Um, but it's Director Brent Hugh, who is taking a much-needed break this week, because I'm sure we can all relate. Um, he did share, um, some comments, and I wanna, I'm just gonna give the brief overview, and then I'll submit the full document to be included in the record if that suits our acting administrative director. Um, so what this ordinance does is it separates out bicycles from scooters and skates in the county's traffic law. These are very different types of vehicles and need to be dealt with separately. It somewhat improves the scooter and skate provisions to match current law. It vastly improves the basic bicycle law. This is the law that previously required cyclists to ride as far right as possible. Now it a lot, allows bicyclists to legally take the lane when that is the safest, move a little to the right to facilitate passing if it is safe, as judged by the bicyclist, not the motorist, and makes it clear that the bicyclist can move left as needed for turns to avoid dangerous debris, et cetera. Allows riding abreast when not impeding traffic, when on a shoulder or bike lane, or when the lane is so narrow that the cyclists would be riding center lane anyway. Requires safe passing of bicyclists by motorists, including move to next lane when feasible, never pass closer than three feet. Vulnerable road users law applies to all vulnerable road users, including pedestrians, cyclists, wheelchair users, et cetera, and provides specific penalties for motorists who drive carelessly, distracted, and cause injury. And it cleans up several small details and definitions, including crosswalk and intersection, intersection definitions, fits modern standards, usages, matches state law, um, and bicycle and motorized vehicle definition are updated to also match state law. Um, again, there's a, there's about fifteen pages of Q and A here, so I will definitely forward this to our administrative director to include in the final record. Um, and before we move to co- uh, public comment, are there any other questions, comments, final notes? From anyone on the Yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out in, uh, section twelve-ten, uh, point zero-five-five, there's a place where it says, um, you know, less than the posted speed limit and two slower than the flow of traffic. On many county roads, the speed limit is twenty-five miles per hour. So a bicyclist might be above the speed limit, but also slower than traffic. So I would suggest that that and is changed to an or.
Great, thank you. Um, it looks like, um, Jen, we're gonna have some work to do to, uh, look at this, look, look at this bill again.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, before we move to public? All right, Diane, I think we yield the floor to your reading of our public comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first comment today is from Deb Matush. "Council members, I just heard about this meeting that is so important to put bicycle lanes in unincorporated St. Louis County. Obviously, you do not live here, or you would not think it important. In most of unincorporated St. Louis County, you have roads that barely accommodate the residents' day-to-day traffic. The roads leading to my house have no shoulders or curbs. Kirkwood itself has great bike lanes because you can make safe co-usage with bikers. But when you get out where I live, not the case. There are plenty of trails, parks, and roads that can accommodate bikers. I don't think you really understand what you think is a good idea. Unincorporated areas are low on the totem pole when it comes to maintenance and upkeep, and in some instances are MoDOT's responsibility. Think red tape when it comes to getting something done. And then there is the money issue. Where is the money coming from? In a year where St. Louis County is dying on the vine economically, you want to be concerned about bike lanes. To quote Joe Biden, 'Come on, man,' end of quote. I would really like to see you use this time and money to find a way to help small businesses in St. Louis County, both unincorporated and incorporated. I am constantly amazed at what this council thinks is important. You obviously aren't listening to the people you say you work for. I believe you think we actually work for you. No to this idea." And from Diane Unger. "In this time of economic stress for the county of St. Louis, it is irresponsible for the council to recommend expenditures for creating bicycles along our public streets. Bicycle lanes are beneficial, only when bicyclists obey the rules and boundaries. Many, if not most, bicyclists do not. Bicycling is most often witnessed on the weekends, as St. Louis County is not a bicycling city. Bicyclists have numerous trails throughout the county to use. Our state has the Katy Trail, a wonderful and safe pathway for bicyclists. At this time, St. Louis County has important pressing economic issues to deal with. Focusing on bicycle lanes, in my opinion, is not a pressing issue." And from Celeste Whitzel. "Councilmember Dunaway's ordinance, section twelve, twelve-point-two-hundred, quote, 'causing injury to vulnerable road users,' end quote, is proposed to be amended to state in part, one, as used in this section, the term 'vulnerable road user' includes the following: A person lawfully operating or riding any of the following on a public right-of-way, crosswalk, or shoulder of the roadway, bicycle, tricycle, or other pedal-powered vehicle, a farm tractor or similar vehicle designed primarily for farm use, a skateboard, roller skates, inline skates, a scooter, a moped, a motorcycle, an animal-drawn wheeled vehicle, farm equipment, or sled, an electric personal assistive mob- mobility device, or a wheelchair. Two, no person shall operate a motor vehicle in a careless or distracted manner and thereby cause injury to a vulnerable road user. I know personally of two pedestrians who were seriously injured recently, including one now with permanent brain damage because of being hit by bike-riding vulnerable road users. Who's looking out for vulnerable pedestrians being injured by cyclists, and now, motorized cyclists? Many cyclists, especially motorized cyclists, Mini cyclists, especially motorized cyclists, are exceeding road speed limits, creating numerous dangers for vulnerable pedestrians, not to mention darting out in front of cars and trucks. Our roads were not designed for this ordinance's purposes. In addition to traffic issues, Dunaway's ordinance will create for adversely impacted, unincorporated South County drivers trying to get to and from work by having cyclists riding on the same road lanes as autos. This legislation creates a protected class of cyclists with no requirements to carry liability insurance. Does this legislation require that all cyclists carry liability insurance, as automobile drivers must carry? If not, why not? If cyclists will share the road, then they must share the liability load via full liability insurance coverage. Until you address vulnerable pedestrians being run over and permanently disabled by cyclists, then this legislation should be tabled. Cyclists should be as liable monetarily for causing injury to vulnerable road users as automobile drivers are. Require all cyclists to carry liability insurance. Sensible people realize the dangers of cars, cyclists, skateboarders, tricyclists, mopeters, and pedestrians sharing thus same busy roads and highways, and this legislation is a recipe for disaster. Your preemptive action to threaten and intimidate auto drivers to watch out or else is typical when you know legislation is ill-conceived. But to not require liability insurance for all cyclists who can injure, maim, and kill pedestrians is even worse." From Paul Wojcowski, I'm sorry I butchered that. "I want to express my support for substitute Bill Number 2 for Bill Number 385, Bike Bill, which updates, defines, and enhances operations of bicycles on roadways, as well as clearly defining motorists passing bicyclists on the road, as well as causing injury to vulnerable road users. As a transportation professional and a person who walks and bicycles frequently, this bill has taken into account numerous perspectives needed to craft a law that clarifies, describes, and provides a simple understanding of how motorists and bicyclists can have positive interactions on our roadways, and is a tool to assist law enforcement in carrying out their responsibilities in an even and equitable fashion. In my role as a League of American Bicyclist Cycling Instructor, professional advocate, and former elected official, the coordination and engagement of stakeholders in this matter has been above and beyond, and has included both a statewide and local perspective to this matter in a way that will make St. Louis County a leader for other counties and entities to follow in taking positive steps to facilitating a true multi-model network, modal network for people to be able to choose how they travel and ways they can operate safely on our public roads, looking from the lens of a motor vehicle user or a person riding a bicycle." And from Carl Mitchell. "I have lived in St. Louis County for five years as of this week. This bill will help to protect vulnerable road users and bring out county, and bring our county in line with other areas, both in Missouri throughout the country. I believe this is a first step in showing that we value the lives of all road users, regardless of their transport method." And our last comment is from Jean Hutchins. "Greetings to the St. Louis County Council Committee as a whole. These proposed regulations make sense. What is missing: an explicit statement requiring such bicyclists to obey and comply with traffic controls, stop signs, traffic lights, yield signs. You might argue the Missouri Driver's Manual requires this obligation. It is my belief that it must be stated and enforced." Madam Chair, that's all the comments.
Thank you so much. Are there any other comments or questions from anyone on the panel? The one thing I forgot to do for Councilman Harder is to ask the question about, and this is for Taylor and then Melissa, I'm sorry. I kind of want to get your reaction, Taylor, to a requirement to, for lights on bikes.
So there is a current state law that does require a white front light at night and at least a two-inch red rear reflector or a red light on the back of a bicycle if operated at night. So from my understanding, that's, that's already covered under state law and doesn't necessarily need to be within St. Louis County's ordinances as well.
Would you have any objections to us including such a requirement?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the panel?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman Fitch.
I spoke with Councilman Harder about that and let him know that that was already in the law. And he specifically said, was talking about having it during the daylight hours in addition to the nighttime hours. So I think that'd be the right question to ask.
Go ahead, Taylor.
Yeah, so for, for the daylight hours, I think the complications for, for how that would be applied in terms of like, you know, bicycles are not only used for transportation, but also used, you know, by children for recreation and things like that. So I think there might need to be some explicit provisions in terms of at what age that begins to apply, and then also, you know, on our local trails and greenway system, when, when that isn't in effect. But other than that, that seems like a reasonable line of thought to me.
Okay, great. Then this is something that I will explore further with the county councillor's office. Any, anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman Trakus.
I just wanted to thank all of our participants today for their time and knowledge and the information they shared with us. It's all very helpful.
Thank you for that. And I, I second Councilman Trakus. I especially appreciate all of y'all who showed up to sit in our hot seat today. So thank you very much. Thank you all for continuing in this dialogue and helping to make this the best piece of legislation that we can for St. Louis County. I would certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any knows? All right, hearing none, this meeting is officially adjourned. Thanks again. Have a great day, everyone.
Thank you, Madam Chair.